Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Genoa Township Board of Trustees meeting. This is a regular trustee meeting. Today's date is March 7th, 2024, and the time is 7:00 PM. Pat, will you call the roll?
Mr. Antoness.
Here.
Ms. Goodman.
Here.
Ms. Vaughn.
Here. Also present, we have our fiscal officer, Pat Myers, Donna Batten, the Assistant Fiscal Officer and Human of Resources Director, Lauren Fitzpatrick, Acting Deputy Director of Roads, Buildings and Grounds and Parks, Rich Lyons, our Police Lieutenant, Joe Ponzi, our Fire Chief, Joe Schaefer, the Director of Zoning and Development. We have Jim McMillan, our Police Chief, Paul Wise, Township Administrator.
Would you please rise for the presentation and the colors?
Thank you, Police Department, for leading us in the pledge and the presentation. Next, we have the swearing-in of our fiscal officer, Pat Meyer.
Thank you. Commissioner Barb Lewis, would you do the honors, please?
It is my honor to do the honors.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I.
I, Pat Myers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of fiscal officer.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of fiscal officer.
In Genoa Township.
In Genoa Township.
Delaware County.
Delaware County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Commissioner Lewis. First time I ran for office was in 2007.
Right.
And Commissioner Lewis, back then, hoped to be trustee Lewis. We ran, kind of ran together.
We did.
Put our signs out there and stuff, so that was kind of cool. Got a bunch of people here, friends, family, coworkers, bosses, all kinds of people. Terry and Jacqueline and Max are here. But I have to tell you, after 16 years, if it wasn't for this lady, I'd be in trouble. So thanks, Donna. Appreciate it. Thanks.
When you hand a commissioner the mic. Yeah, okay. I do have to say, I mean, I remember running together with you, Pat, and Pat knows everybody, as you know, and they all love him, so I thought, oh, this is a good person to run with. And I was right. But I remember when we first began our service, and you actually called for a clean plate audit. We all discovered at the same time that there were certain things that needed to be corrected. And so Pat wanted to make sure everything was done. He wanted to clear the deck, make certain everything. The house was in order. Everything in the house was in order. And I admire you for your work done over the years. You have been an excellent fiscal officer, and Donna, you have done a wonderful job, too. Thank you so much.
And I would say that if anybody is here to see me be sworn in, I would leave now quietly. Go on home, because.
While you can.
Otherwise, it's not the most exciting hour half of your life, so.
We're not offended.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Rick. Thank you.
And it's still your show, Pat, so.
Fiscal Officer's Report. Okay. First of all, thank you, trustees. I would ask for approval of the trustee meeting minutes. December 18th, 2023, Special Trustee Zoning Meeting, February 1st, 2024, Regular Trustee Meeting, and the March 4th, 2024, Special Trustee Meeting, as presented.
I'll move to approve the following: December 18th, 2023, Special Trustee Meeting, Special Trustee Zoning Meeting, February 1st, 2024, Regular Trustee Meeting, March 4th, 2024, Special Trustee Meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antoness.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. I have bank reconciliation for you, January and February. January is totally reconciled and complete. I won't read those balances to you, though, because we have new balances. So posted through March 5th, everything is reconciled. We have $20,97,895.05. That's broken up into our pooled investments of $19,796,939.75, and our primary account of $300,395.30. And I'll have this for your review, and, well, you already had it for review, but I'll have it for your signature afterwards.
Thank you.
The only other thing I have is, we had a, in April, we have a Records Retention Commission Annual Meeting scheduled. We'd like to move that to September. There's been a lot of things going on with Linda leaving and some things, a lot of changes going on, and there's some additional things that Donna wants to spend with the Police Department on some new things that may be added, so we'd like to move that to September 5th.
Yep.
Is that the right date, September 5th?
Yes, I'm looking at the calendar.
So if we could do that, that'd be great.
At 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM, prior to the meeting.
Okay.
I don't even need a motion for that. We're just consensus schedule, correct? Okay. That's all I have for now. Well, not for now, for the rest of the evening.
That I'll open it up to public comment, if there's anybody here who wants to speak during public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll keep my remarks brief. I had two points of business tonight. One was to be here to support my friend, former colleague, Pat Myers. I wish him well in the next four years and thank him for his exemplary service. The other reason I'm here is I wanted to openly commend our Police Chief, James McMillan, and I also want to recognize Officer Kyle Simkowiac, if I said it right, and Lieutenant Demmon as well. So the day after Christmas, 3:00 in the afternoon, my wife and I were taking down, starting to take down decorations inside. And we were greeted at the front door by half a dozen police cars, mixture of township officers and Delaware County Sheriff's deputies. We were the subjects, we were the targets of a swatting attack. It was reported in the paper. I was trying to keep my family's name out of the paper as long as I could, but, you know, it got in, it's fine. It was myself, our state senator, Andrew Brenner, was actually hit twice, once at his former residence and once at his new residence, same day, same time. A former colleague of mine, State Representative Kevin Miller, out in Lakin County, was also targeted, and our Attorney General, Dave Yost, was also hit, all at their personal residences. The common thread was, we all worked collectively on the swatting bill. It was one of the last pieces of legislation that I got done and signed into law by the governor before I left the state legislature, which created the actual swatting penalty, which was a felony offense. It allows for local governments to recoup the considerable expenses and resources that go into these types of attacks. So I was thinking at the time how ironic it was that I was the victim of the very crime that I helped, you know, define under law. But I want to just let everybody in this room, particularly the three of you, know as my trustees, how proud I am of our Police Department, on how they handled the situation. You know, these are very scary situations. So an individual called 911 twice and said first that I had killed my wife, that I had shot her in the head, and then secondly called back to say that I was holding another male hostage in my house. That's very serious. And that's what makes these swatting offenses so dangerous, is when you call in something that serious and, you know, marshal all these forces to one's home, and I can very easily see how these things go awry. You know, if you knock on the wrong door and somebody's not expecting, you know, the police with their guns drawn, you know, I can see how these things get out of hand with the miscommunication. I was thankful that it was the middle of the day, quite frankly, and not at 3:00 in the morning, when, you know, it's dark out and it's harder to see. But in any case, it's really a testament to the professionalism of our police officers. It's a testament to the support that our community has in our Police Department and all the support that you, as our trustees, have given our Police Department over the years. We give them the vehicles, the equipment, the training they need. I can remember when they first got the CLIA accreditation, what a big deal that was. We kept talking about, you know, how outstanding this is. Now I know why it's so important, because I never felt in danger. I mean, it was obviously a very unnerving situation for my wife and I. We're walking outside, we have our hands up. You know, these officers, they didn't have their guns pointed at us, but, you know, they had their ARs out, and it's, you know, it's a very tense situation. But I never felt in danger for my life. They handled it very professionally. They were very apologetic, which they had no reason to be apologetic. And in any case, again, that just goes back to the level of training. You know, we hear about all these other situations involving law enforcement that don't go as smoothly. And I really believe that it's because of the CLIA accreditation, it's because of the training they receive, it's because of the support that our community has for officers, that, again, the situation ended very quickly and peacefully, and, you know, we got to the bottom of it very quickly. And I just, again, as a resident, as a taxpayer, I want to thank you, Chief, and your officers for everything that you guys do on a daily basis. I know that you guys see a lot of terrible things that we all hope that we never have to see in our lifetime. It's a normal day for the rest of you. I can remember reading those monthly reports about, you know, crimes that are committed in this township that people don't even know about, you know. Unfortunately, we have thefts, we have domestic violence, we have all kinds of things that happen right under our noses, and you guys see it every day and you deal with it, and you deal with it in a very honorable way. So that's all I have. I just wanted to come in and share my experience and let everybody know that I'm very, very grateful for the people we have watching over us 24 hours a day. Thank you.
Hey, quick question.
Sure.
Did they catch how difficult it is to catch these?
You'll have to ask the detective. I think it's ongoing. I really don't know. I mean, I know locally it was routed immediately to the detectives, but I'm sure now, I mean, once you take, you know, once you go after the Attorney General, I'm sure things get escalated a little bit higher up, so I really don't know. I mean, Chief, I don't know if you can comment on the investigation.
I think it is. It is currently an open investigation, but it has been sent to, the FBI is involved in it, the JTTF, the Joint Terrorism Task Force, various fusion centers with different levels of federal government are all investigating it. Normally, when you have a swatting incident, especially one like this that's targeted so many dignitaries and former dignitaries, it's going to go up to the federal government and it's going to be investigated through terrorism task forces. So as of now, there's, no, there has not been a closure or an apprehension. It's an open investigation, but it is being investigated by those groups with local law enforcement assisting, but they're taking the lead on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I just want to make a comment. I wanted to talk to you yesterday after the Genoa Township Business Association, but somebody was chatting with you for a while afterwards, and then before the meeting, and you were chatting over here, so I just want to take this opportunity to say it was a great presentation, very informative. So thank you for taking the time to present to the group.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I presented at the Genoa Township Business Association yesterday. They asked me to just come and be a speaker. I'm with the Ohio Chamber of Commerce now, and I gave kind of a general, kind of an economic update on the state of affairs throughout the state of Ohio and, you know, some of the ongoing issues associated with all the growth that's happening in the state, so. But thank you.
It was very informative, so thank you.
Well, it's good to be back. Thank you all for what you're doing, and hope you have a pleasant evening.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment tonight? All right, see none. We'll move on to trustee comments. Anyone?
No.
I don't have anything.
I've got a few things. If I can find it. There you go. First, I want to say publicly thank you. I did send an email to Scott Sanders regarding the regional planning. I did attend the meeting last week, and they did open up an invitation to any trustee in Delaware County to attend last week's meeting to discuss the issues that Concord Township brought forth. So I appreciate them offering that opportunity to the trustees, and during that meeting, they committed to having a special meeting for township trustees. So actually, it was a couple hours before this meeting, I received a survey asking when we are available. So I just want to comment that thank you for the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission for falling through on Concord Township's request. And also, I just want to thank our Police, Fire, and Maintenance Departments in their preparation for the solar eclipse on April 8th. They've been working for months, and they had their final meeting last Friday. I think the township is, we're preparing for the worst, hoping for the best. If you are a township resident, I would encourage you to stock up on some supplies before the 8th and gasoline, just in case. Again, prepare for the worst, hope for the best. And then finally, I debated back and forth on making comments about this, but I just want to start out by saying these are my personal thoughts. They aren't reflective of the township's thoughts and feelings and opinions regarding the Westerville and Harlem Township merger. I realize I might be stirring the pot, but it's a chance I'm willing to take. So I did attend, because I went to regional planning last week, I couldn't attend the meeting in Harlem last week, but I did go to the City of Westerville's meeting on Tuesday of this week. And I didn't know a whole lot about the situation until the last couple of days, but this is what I've come up with. I don't, at this point, my opinion is this is not a good idea, a merger, and I'm going to tell you why. If you look up the definition of merger in the Ohio Revised Code, it equals annexation. It's right there in the definition. The difference between annexation and merger, in an annexation, you have individual property owners who own a certain amount of land, who decide individually that, yes, I want to annex into this municipality, Westerville. They decide that on their own. And it's, you annex one parcel at a time, so it takes longer. When you do a merger, and in annexation, you have to be contiguous. You have to touch the entity that you're annexing into. So in this case, Harlem and Westerville don't touch, so if you did, they couldn't annex. So the only option is merger. So the only option is merger. And you used to not be able to merger into a municipality if you didn't touch. But they changed the law a few years ago and now you can. You don't have to touch. In a merger, you have to have the approval of the elected officials in both entities. So in this case, you have to have a two-thirds vote in favor of merger for Harlem Township trustees and the City of Westerville City Council. And then it goes to the ballot. So in November, you're going to have the residents of Harlem and the residents of Westerville. And it's a 50% plus one. And each entity separately has to come up with 50% plus one. It's not, not a combined vote, 50% plus one, to do the merger. Again, you don't have to touch, but in this case, it's an annexation of the entire township at once. So and the role of the trustees dissolves. The, if this happens, there are no more Harlem Township trustees. You, you all become just your, your Westerville City Council then, as of if this goes through January 1st, 2025. All of Harlem Township now, the representation is, is Westerville City Council. So in my opinion, also, you had one Harlem Township trustee who spoke at the City of Westerville's meeting on Tuesday, and that trustee said that he did not know what a JED or a TIF was. I think that's unacceptable. Do your homework. If you don't know, you need to find out. Harlem Township has not reached out to the Ohio Township Association for input or help. And they, I did check today, they are members. So the OTA would be happy to provide resources and input on this. Reach out to your fellow Delaware County trustees. Delaware Township in Delaware County has 11 islands, because they've been annexed so much from the city of Delaware. Reach out to your fellow trustees in your own county. Berlin Township has, has experienced with annexation. And Brown Township, just in the last few months, they've been annexed to, from the city of Delaware. So I encourage them to reach out to other entities. I don't think this is the answer. And this is my opinion at this point. I don't envision it changing, but if more information comes to me, then maybe I'll change my mind. But that's my input at this, at this time. I know there are a lot of Genoa Township residents, especially on the east side of Hoover, who are worried about this. I've had them reach out to me. At the meeting on Tuesday, there were Genoa Township residents attending the meeting because they are concerned. I don't blame them, honestly. So I just wanted to go on record. I know I'm putting myself out there, but I feel strongly about this. I'm willing to, to put myself out there and my thoughts. So at that, I'm going to be finished with trustee comments. And we'll move on. Paul, administration?
Good evening, Board. I have two items for your consideration this evening. First, both of them are in an advisory capacity. First, I'd like to advise you that this year, at December 31st, our 2.1 mil road levy is expiring. We put this up for vote on in 2019. It's a five-year levy and it's pivotal to the operation of our nearly 100 miles of streets in our township. So in the past years, the Board has authorized me to form an ad hoc committee to analyze the data for the next five years and basically where we are right now on carryovers and what's expected to be function for our township in the next five years. So if it's the Board's will, I'll, I'll pursue that matter again and have my meetings concluded and a report back to you at the April meeting. Is everyone okay with that?
I got one question.
Yes.
If it's one trustee, they're, they could sit in on these meetings, correct?
Yes.
Do you want to do it?
I think so.
All right.
Go ahead.
It's what I do.
I'll let you know.
I would like.
I didn't hear you. Do you want to do this?
Yes, sure.
Okay. No, I've done it previously as a resident, not as a trustee, so.
We'll invite you then?
Yeah.
When we're ready, so.
I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
He's the meet at 10:00 at night.
No, I won't. And, and secondly, I think everybody in the township knows now that there's been a purchase that happened. It was a big announcement that broke today. We like big positive announcements in our township. So the township did purchase Freeman Farm. It was an excellent opportunity to preserve a farm in its natural state. It was required very little capital outlay by our Township General Fund. So the state granted us through a state green space preservation grant, nearly 1.4 million. We matched that with ARPA funds, $765,000, and the rest came out of General Fund, which was less than $300,000, which is an awesome deal for our residents. So the, the, the press release went out. Leslie did an excellent job at producing this video with the Freemans being interviewed and showed the historical nature of this, of this farm for the past 185 years where they've owned it. So now comes the hard part, naming this lovely park. And so I know everyone has a lot of good ideas, but since we do have a formed Parks Committee already, I, I suggest vetting this through the Parks Committee and seeing at their next meeting what kind of thoughts they have and maybe some, some ideas for a name for this park, so.
I think, I think the look on Molly's face says all.
An up and down nod from the chair of the Parks out there.
If they're willing to take on the task, then I suggest we go that route. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Molly, and the Parks Committee.
And that's all I have.
Awesome, that's great news.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think the staff and, well, trustees, I think I'm just so happy that I can actually talk about it at this point, because it's been a long time coming. All right, I'll turn it over to police and Chief McMillan.
Good evening, Board. Tonight I got a couple of items. The first item, I'm going to request approval in accordance with Section 15 of the collective bargain agreement with our police union. I'm requesting tuition reimbursement for Officer Joseph Washington. Joe would like to attend Liberty University to earn his master's degree in public administration. And I believe we submitted some paperwork with your packet earlier this week that talked about tuition and the classes he needed and potential timeframe with his graduation.
Ready for motion?
Sorry?
You ready for me to read the motion?
Unless you have questions.
Nope. Well, we'll, we'll ask in a minute if we do. I'll move to approve the tuition reimbursement for Officer Joseph Washington for a master's degree in business and government administration from Liberty University per Article 15 tuition reimbursement in the Ohio Parliament's benevolent association union agreement. Reimbursement will be based on final grades. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antonett.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries.
And then I have one more item, which we are requesting two purchase orders. So tonight I'm requesting a purchase order, a then and now purchase order in the amount of $12,538.01 to Enterprise, and that's going to be for an unmarked police vehicle. And then a second purchase order I'm requesting in the amount of $81,500, again, to Enterprise, and that would be for two marked police SUVs. And that $81,500 is for them to be completely outfitted and outfitted.
Okay, I'll move to approve the following purchase orders, then a now purchase order to Enterprise Management for $12,538.01 for a Nissan Rogue purchase and an annual purchase order for Enterprise Management for $81,500 for the annual motor vehicles purchase. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antonett.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Chief. And next, I'll turn it over to Lauren with maintenance.
Good evening, Board. I have a few items for you this evening. My first is a request to hire Brooke James to the position of the Maintenance Department Office Assistant. It'd be effective February 28th of 2024 at $19 per hour with a six-month probationary period.
Okay, I'll move to hire Brooke James to the position of Maintenance Department Office Assistant, effective February 28th, 2024, at $19 per hour with a six-month probationary period. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Antonett.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries.
My second request would be for a supplemental appropriation to, from account in the amount of $10,000 for maintenance uniform allowances.
Okay, I'll move to approve the following 2024 supplemental appropriations from account 2031-330-360-0000 in the amount of $10,000 for maintenance uniform allowances. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Lauren, would you kind of want to give an overview? Because I think this is a, a nice opportunity for us.
Absolutely. So if passed, we would be using the Centas Uniform Company for our uniforms for our full-time maintenance workers. This would give us some structure to our uniform program for our workers and it gives us a more professional, uniform look and a more identifiable to our, not only our residents, but our park users and folks traveling through the area when we're out working on the roadways. Even for the, for our look of more professional, if, if it needs just normal laundered, obviously it's laundered. But if it's sustained or torn or damaged, uniform, that's all part of the uniform cost that they'll replace that or fix that, whatever be the case. My favorite part of the situation is our uniform shirts and coats that we would provide for our maintenance workers would be a Class II ANSI uniform shirt. So that would do away with our safety vest and they would always have a safety vest on at all times with our Genoa logo on the shirt. So that gives us more safety in, in many, many ways for my maintenance workers, so. I think it'd be a great thing, but.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions, comments? All right, roll call.
Mr. Antonett.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries.
And a request to approve the annual blanket purchase order in the amount of $10,000 for uniform allowances to the Maintenance Department.
I'll move to approve an annual blanket purchase order in the amount of $10,000 for uniform allowances for the Maintenance Department. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. I'm sorry, discussion. I meant to say discussion, wrong word came out. Roll call.
Mr. Antonett.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries.
My last request for the evening would be to amend our Genoa Township park rules. I'd like to include no smoking or vaping, no open fires or fireworks, and no parking on the grass to our already set rules that we have in place.
Okay, I'll move to amend the 2024 Genoa Township park rules to include the following: no smoking, vaping, no open fires, fireworks, no parking on the grass. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question. Possibly, possibly. Open fires, fireworks, are sparklers, is it clear that sparklers are part of fireworks or should that be added? Or do we allow those?
Sparklers are a general consumer-grade firework, so they do not follow, fall under the latest revision of the Ohio Revised Code regarding fireworks. As far as, you know, we're allowed to set off fireworks certain holidays during the year where it's all allowable. Sparklers do not fall, they're allowed permissible prior to the change in the law and they're still allowable. Now, as far as interpretation of are they allowed in a public township space, I think you're still allowed to say no to that.
And that's my concern. I, I'm suggesting that maybe we add sparklers to the end of that, especially during a dry season. I think that might be an issue. And then the other one was, should it be no parking or driving on the grass? Because we've had a little of both, so those are my two thoughts.
I think they're good thoughts. I'm, I'm okay with that.
If I may.
Yep.
Maybe I wasn't clear enough. Sparklers, smoke bombs, et cetera, are still classified as a firework. So if you say you can't have fireworks in the park, you can't have sparklers, can't have smoke bombs, et cetera. I was just trying to define of, with the change of the law, you know, we had a, last year, someone rented this property and they wanted to do fireworks. We're like, no, cannot do that. But sparklers and all that is still, it's a different grade, but it's still classified as a firework. So if you say fireworks, I think it would be enforceable by law enforcement.
Okay. From my perspective as a resident, I guess, as so many people have sparklers, I don't even think of them as a firework anymore. So that's why I'm wondering if we should just say it on the sign, done deal, even though it's included in fireworks. I'm open to, to thoughts on this.
I, I think if it's covered, I don't think we need to add sparklers, but I do like the driving on the grass versus parking. I don't know how you feel about.
I'll take one win.
So I'll amend my motion to add no parking slash driving on the grass.
And I will second that amended motion.
Thank you, thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Antonett.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, motion carries. All right, thank you. Lauren, and next we'll turn it over to fire and Chief Ponzi.
Good evening, Board. I have a few more items than Chief McMillan had. First item in front of you tonight would be a presentation of the Delaware County 911 Final Plan. And if you had a chance to read through this, good for you. I had a conversation with Director Yankinen last week just so I could understand why this is coming in front of you. And to boil it down simply is that there was a change in the Ohio Revised Code of Chapter 128, which changed how when 911 centers had changes to their operational or final plans, it now has to be reported to all the, reported and then approved by resolution to all the political subdivisions with, that serve under that, that are served by that agency. So which is why you all are getting this paperwork from Director Yankinen asking for the approval of the, the new County 911 Plan. Just to give you the highlights of what this new plan is, is this is the movement forward that's going to allow the Delaware County 911 Center, what we call DelCom, to implement what's called NextGen 911. And I asked Lauren if she would tell me what that is and there's a couple really interesting highlights that are going to come out of this is that it's going to allow precise routing of, I don't know the percentage but now, but years ago, I was really surprised at the high percentage of 911 calls that were received by the county center that were cell phone. And I can only imagine that number probably went up. It will allow for better routing of cell phone calls. We still get calls in the county, mostly on the fringe area of the township that will go, a lot of times they'll go to the Westerville 911 Center and then they have to be transferred. Sometimes they go to the Franklin County 911 Center. So this will help allow the precise routing of the 911 location we're supposed to be directed to, first off. In other words, we're not wasting time processing the 911 call. The second one, it makes it more reliable because in the process of transferring those calls, you always have the chance that you drop a call or you disconnect the call. So it goes to the appropriate 911 center where the caller is located. And then we do already have the ability to, they have the ability to receive text 911. But along with that, they will also have the ability to receive photos and videos from the 911 caller received into the 911 center. And then along with that, in the case where there is or a person calls from, is in Delaware County and is concerned about, let's just say, a family member that lives in Cincinnati. It allows for a more It allows for a more seamless transfer of that 911 call to the correct 911 agency so that they can handle the call where the emergency is. So in the cases where the routing would be correct, they're dialing 911 in Delaware County, it'll go to the Delaware 911 Center. But the actual emergency, let's say, is in Hamilton County in Cincinnati, it allows for that better transfer of that 911 call to the appropriate 911 center. That is the crux of the NextGen 911 system. And for years, I think she told me that a lot of these, none of these updates have taken place nor have you had to been made aware since 2007. And that probably was the implementation of the first gen 911 or E-911 enhanced. So that's why it's in front of you this evening. And I just wanted to give you a little background of what it was so you could hopefully understand a little bit more of what you were voting on.
I'll move to approve the final plan for implementing and operating a County 911 system as approved by the Delaware County Commissioners, Resolution Number 24-103. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
I got a quick question. There, it does itemize some significant costs in the seven figures. I just want to confirm there is no additional cost.
There is no cost to the township. Because it may be different from county to county, but the way that our system is funded here in Delaware County, there's no cost directly related to the township. They're funded by the County Commissioners and a 911 tax.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And Paul, I guess maybe we can get that information back to the Director tomorrow or Monday. Secondly, in your packet of information is a request for approval to enter into an agreement with Resource Management Consultants. Basically, if you had a chance to read through this, we're looking at a couple promotional processes within the department. We need to promote a person to the rank of captain. And the person, person that would be eligible for that would be current serving lieutenants. And of course, if that takes place, we're going to have a vacancy for a lieutenant. So we'll test some of the eligible firefighters to possible promotion to the rank of lieutenant. This is an outside company. I've looked at a couple. Spoke with a couple local fire chiefs that have used this company. They're very satisfied with the services that they've received through them. If you look through this, there's going to be, we've selected books for the candidates to study depending on what position that they would be testing for. And then a test will be developed on those books that they are required to study. And then after that, if they're selected to move forward in the process, they will go through a several step, what we call an assessment center, where they have to deal with scenarios that are given to them by outside assessors. And then out of that, they'll come back and deliver to me and then ultimately to you the recommendations for those people to promote.
I'll move to approve a 2024 promotional assessment proposal with the Resource Management Consultants and authorize the fiscal office to issue a purchase order in the amount.
Of, I just saw that that was blank. I'm looking. It's in here somewhere.
There's two costs in there.
That's correct. I was just going to add them for the total, if that's okay. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that that wasn't in the. I'm sorry? I came up with 15,492.
Yeah, 15.
Just a small difference.
Well, it wouldn't make sure enough money, Joe.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you looking out for us. I came up with $15,492.
Okay. In the amount of $15,492, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
And did I miss it? Is it not on here?
Resignation.
I'm sorry. Resignation, but I had one other item. Change Healthcare. Is it on there? Did I not see it? Okay. So let's just do the resignation real quick. I have that. I just didn't see it on the agenda. Would request that the Board accept the resignation of Andrew, who we go call him by Chase Hicks, his intent to resign from Genoa Township effective March 13, 2024. Chase was hired in 2016 and has been here obviously for eight, approximately eight years. Chase has accepted a position with Mifflin Township Fire Department, which is the area of Gehanna. We wish him the best in his future endeavors and I would request that he would accept his resignation.
I'll move to accept the resignation of full-time firefighter/paramedic Andrew Hicks effective March 13, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Go ahead.
How does this lead your, in your staff?
This will put us at three short. We are in the hiring process right now. We did agility testing last Saturday and interviews scheduled for next Tuesday. So we are moving forward.
Some candidates, possible candidates.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. Do you have in your packet the letter from Change Healthcare?
Yeah, we have it.
Okay. So I just didn't see it on the agenda, but if it's okay, I'd like to speak to it. It is important for us. We received notice from Change Healthcare, who is our EMS billing company, of a notice to cease or terminate the agreement that we have with them. We've been with them since 2017. Like I said, they're the company that does our EMS billing. It's our understanding that Chase, Chase, Change was recently bought out by a larger company by the name of Optum. And what information we were given is it sounds like Optum has decided that this was not profitable enough for their endeavors and they're going to shut down this division. So we have until March 6 of 2025 when that contract will cease. I've already been in two meetings recently. Soon as we were notified, we started different agencies. There's probably, say 90% of the fire departments in central Ohio were with Change Healthcare. They pretty much cornered the market here centrally. They got their foot in and everybody just started to go do business with them. So there's a lot of us in the same boat. So there's been a lot of meetings. I attended one meeting at Liberty Township with a company roughly out of the Akron-Canton area. And then last Monday, I attended another meeting with three vendors, two of them in the state of Ohio and one in Pittsburgh. If it's okay with the Board, I'd like to pursue looking at various vendors and then maybe with the assistance of Donna, we could work on some proposals and then boil down what, what all the proposals are and then maybe bring it forth to you all for a final choice or decision. I feel that, I really don't want to wait until next year. Change Healthcare is also, if you've been in, watching the news, was the company that had the large cyber attack. So it's affected us to the point where we're, we are not currently uploading any EMS billing because they're basically turned the lights out on the organization. We can't call them. We can't email them. I get a blind email once a day of status updates. We're not billing. But it's okay. Well, eventually we will bill, but we're going to have a little bit of a lull in income. Shouldn't affect us because we already have our money appropriated for this year. But I also am concerned that if we already know that they're going to terminate the contract and once they get their operation running again, I would just assume us find a new vendor and move forward, have a conversation with them to pick a earlier date to terminate the contract and be ready to move into a new vendor and just be done with it and be over with it.
Yeah, I would just confirm that you can cancel anytime. If they're terminated, they probably won't care.
In the letter, in the second paragraph, I think it's a, yeah. If you have any questions or would like to discuss an earlier transition, please contact said person. And I would say that once we get to the point where we think we're close to selecting another vendor, then we'll just figure out, I think Donna and I can figure out how we want that to happen and then come to you all and get a blessing and we'll make it happen.
My concern is if we stay with them too long, that their level of service will continue to deteriorate. So I think we'd be better off to get someone sooner rather than later. So I'm fine with your thought process.
Okay. Okay. That's, I mean, that's all I had. Thank you.
All right. Last but not least, zoning with Joe Schaper.
Good evening, Board. I have a couple items for you this evening. The first is the continued discussion about, an item that Trustee Vaughn actually sort of already mentioned, the regional planning discussion and the vote still needed on the paying of the, or the approval of the purchase order for payment of the dues in the amount of $15,179. I will just go on. I, as the Chair of the Regional Planning Commission, you know, at that meeting, I echo Trustee Vaughn's comments. We are in the process of finalizing the dates we're going to put in the survey to get sent out. I've had communication with Scott Sanders even today about that. So we're shortlisting dates based off of all the meetings. You have to take into account for all the different entities. It's quite the challenge. Fortunately, the Delaware Township Association already had that all sort of chorted out or charted out, so they could schedule their meetings. So we're using that, that they've put together to find some dates. So they'll go out hopefully here soon, if it hasn't already, and hopefully we'll get something scheduled. So with that, I'll turn that particular item back over to the Board.
So we don't have a motion written here. What was the amount?
It was $15,179.
$79. And it's to Delaware County Regional Planning?
To Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, I believe, is what the purchase order was made out for.
I'll move to approve a payment to the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission in the amount of $15,000, sorry, $15,179 for the annual payment? I don't know what it is. Annual, annual fee? Annual dues. All right. Do I have a second? Thank you. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. The other item of business I have before you is appointments for, well, obviously the zoning boards that I'm involved with, but also I believe all the other committees that Township has.
All right. I'm going to do my best to go through these. I'll move to appoint Robert DeRose to the Board of Zoning Appeals as an alternate member, term ending March 31, 2026. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint Teresa Yu to the Board of Zoning Appeals as a regular member, term ending March 31, 2029. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, this says alternate member.
I skipped that one. I skipped that one.
Okay, okay.
Yep, I just said regular member.
That's all.
Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint Matt Tysman to the Zoning Commission as a regular member, term ending March 31, 2029. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint William Graver to the Zoning Commission as an alternate, term ending March 31, 2026. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to approve Tracy Dam Schroeder to the Communication Advisory Committee, term ending March 31, 2027. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint Stephanie West to the Parks Advisory Committee, term ending March 31, 2027. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint Richard Kachak to the Parks Advisory Committee, term ending March 31, 2027. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint John McHale to the Police Advisory Committee, term ending March 31, 2027. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint Frank Mitchell to the Police Advisory Committee, term ending March 31, 2027. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint Leslie Corwin to the Police Advisory Committee, term ending March 31, 2027. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint Jedidiah Bressman to the Police Advisory Committee with term ending March 31, 2027. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint Mark Meter to the Police Advisory Committee, term ending March 31, 2027. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint Nash Bober to the Police Advisory Committee, term ending March 31, 2026. Do I have a second?
Second. I think that one was 2025 if I, if my notes were correct.
Okay. 2025. I'll amend my motion to 2025.
I'll second the amended.
Thank you. Just, roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint, I missed fire. I'll move to appoint Deborah Harris to the Fire Advisory Committee, term ending March 31, 2027. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to approve Tammy Schroff to the Fire Advisory Committee, term ending March 31, 2027. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to approve Derek Young to the Fire Advisory Committee, term ending March 31, 2027. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I'll move to appoint Larry Steger to the Fire Advisory Committee with terms ending March 31, 2027. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I think that's it. Did I miss anybody?
No. I, I had one of those as expiring 2025.
Which one?
The one was a resignation, so it wouldn't matter, but one of them. We can leave it.
I think we leave it.
Okay. And then the other one was the removal. Did you want to?
Oh, shoot. Yes, thank you. I'll move to remove Catherine Nelson from the Police Advisory Committee for lack of attendance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, motion carries. I think that was the only other.
There was one that resigned. Yeah. Do we have to formally accept that resignation?
Which one was that?
Mary Feskins. Mary, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that. Yeah. Okay.
It's a letter of resignation.
Oh, okay. I guess I missed that. I will move to accept the resignation of Mary Feskins from the Fire Advisory Committee, effective immediately.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. We good? I think we're good. All right.
That's for me, unless you have any questions.
I don't. Thank you, Joe, for your help with all of that. Does anybody else, before I close out? Okay, I'm gonna do announcements. March 11th, there's a zoning commission meeting. March 14th, Communications Advisory Committee. March 19th, Election Day. March 23rd, we have the Muddy Trail event. March 26th, the Board of Zoning Appeals. April 1st, the offices are closed for Easter Monday. April 2nd, Fire Advisory Committee meeting. April 3rd, Parks Advisory Committee meeting. And the next regular trustee meeting is April 4th. I'll move to adjourn to executive session at 8:00 to consider the appointment, employment, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Antonetti?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries. We're now in executive session.
Yeah, ready, ready? Okay. I don't know where my stuff is. I'll move to -- no. I'll move to return from executive session to the regular trustee meeting at 8:52 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any more business before the board?
What's roll call that we're coming up with?
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Ms. Antonet. Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes. Me and Chuck, Pat. Go ahead.
Trustees, you have before you a letter I prepared for your signatures. And it is a letter concerning the result of a grievance hearing that was held, step five grievance hearing that was held this week with David Wark.
I'll move to adopt and issue the letter response to the step five grievance hearing determination for Dave Wark. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Antonet.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, Moshua Karies. At this time, I'll move to adjourn this meeting at 8:53 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Antonet.
Yes.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, Moshua Karies. We're adjourned at 8:53.